Good morning, everyone. Today is the Town Council regular meeting Wednesday, October 6, 2021 at 8:00 AM via GoToMeeting. At this time, we will ask Dennis to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which one stands on the God, with liberty and justice.
Thank you. Dennis, all right, we'll now move on to item number two, which is visitors. Are there any visitors on the call that would like to be recognized at this time?
David Morillo from Human Services.
Hi, David.
Good morning.
Good morning. Anybody else on the call that would like to be recognized at this time? Okay, here and done, then we'll move on to number three, which is the approval of the minutes for the September 15th, 2021 meeting. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Eric, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. Number four, which is the appointments, reappointments, and at this time, we don't have any appointments and or reappointments, so we can move on then to item number five, which is the Partners in Community Grant Application. David is here from Human Services. You want to just give us a little bit of a background on this grant application?
Eric, microphone's off.
Sorry about that.
It's okay.
One that's been coming in for probably over 25 years and has been approved by this body and its predecessor for those years. It's a small state grant. There's no matching funds that are required. We just need to follow over some of the same prevention concerns that they want us, and seeing this year that is like e-cigarettes and that whole thing, definitely something that we want to focus on too, so. It's pretty free and clear as a grant.
Any questions from any council members? Here and done, then we'll move forward and look for a motion to approve the Partners in Community Grant Application as submitted.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Want to do a roll call, Mary? Would be easier?
No.
No. Tim?
I'm, I approve.
Carol?
Yes.
Mark? Christine?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Now we will move on to item number six, which is the ordinance prohibiting cannabis establishments as land use. The next two, obviously, Carl was forwarded out to all the council members, the ordinance, and the wording on the ordinance, ordinance, as we would like to put it together. This is obviously a follow-up from the last meeting where we all voted unanimously to move forward with an ordinance on this. At this point, we'll open it up for any discussions anybody may have on the ordinance as has been presented to us by call.
Carl, I've been reading the, I'm sorry, I've been reading, here, I've been reading in the paper quite a bit how other towns are handling this, especially along the shoreline. Is this ordinance that we're creating very similar to other communities with similar demographics?
I'm not sure if it's similar to other communities. It follows at least one other community. The ordinances that I've looked at that other towns pass vary. Our is a little bit more detailed. Others are, I think what you did before with John Bennett, which is with a paragraph that references a state statute and then you kind of go from there. So this is really just more regurgitating things that are in statute into the ordinance without, so it's, maybe it's longer, but the same content and endpoints is the same as what other municipalities are doing if they're passing the ordinance. If they're passing it through zoning, it would have some of these same definitional points because these come out of the statute, and then it's a prohibition for the land use.
All right, and this would go to public hearing in two weeks, is that correct?
That's what the council expresses its desire to have a public hearing on the 20th. So coming out of this meeting, we would advertise it in the neighborhood register to get it advertised with enough time for the 20th.
Thanks, Carl.
Christine Gupiel, I've noticed some other towns around the, just the general area are doing referendum, so they're, they're allowing the constituents to come and vote on it. Obviously, because we're going to have a public hearing, that is another option that we can go through, so. You know, I, I, you know, I'm still not sure that we're getting a good slice of the community's input on it. I know everybody that had showed up to the planning and zoning meeting, but in terms of what this ordinance does, I'm hoping that we do a good job of getting the information out there so that people can come and voice their, their views on it. Yeah, that's, that's our options at this point.
Anyone else?
I do have a almost unrelated question to this. I see in the first paragraph, it mentions smoking, smoking in general being for, is, do we have an ordinance that says that there's no smoking tobacco on town property?
That's coming next.
That's coming next? We don't, that is not in place at this point?
That's the next agenda item.
Okay.
That one addresses that. So this is, this one is just addressing the establishment of a dispensary in town, and the next one would be the smoking in public.
Okay.
Anybody else on this one? Okay, so here and done, if we have another, I guess we're just looking forward to putting this, moving this forward to a public hearing on October 20th? When you make a motion on that, or can, we're just going to push this to public hearing?
You should have a motion pushing it to public hearing.
So we'll look for a motion to move this. Okay, Tim, a second?
That we take the ordinance prohibiting cannabis establishments as land use in his town and on town property and move it to public hearing on October 20th.
That's two separate things.
Yeah, so the first one would just be ordinance prohibiting cannabis establishments as land use.
Yes, okay, thank you.
All right.
Further discussion?
All right, Mary, you want to do a roll call, please?
Tim?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
All right, thank you, everyone. So next is number seven, which is the ordinance prohibiting cannabis on town property, and this is the one that obviously relates to smoking in public as well. So again, we have the ordinance that's been provided.
I'm talking about tobacco smoking. This specifically cites cannabis in every paragraph, or every, yeah, paragraph except for the first one where it talks about smoking. I'm just asking in general, do we have a policy for schools and any town-owned property? Is that already in existence, or is this designed to cover that?
This does not speak to tobacco use. The state statute that allowed for prohibited use of marijuana did beef up what a municipality can prohibit and got into the ability to pass prohibitions on use of tobacco on municipal-owned property. This particular ordinance is aimed only at the use of cannabis.
Right.
They're two different issues at this point. You do have the authority by the cannabis statute to do something, but since that hasn't been a topic of conversation, that's not included in here, you could always do it in the future.
Basically, just a yes or no question. Do we have an ordinance in place that addresses smoking tobacco, smoking of tobacco on any town property?
No.
Okay, all right, and it's too late to add something like that into this ordinance? It's too late to do that, yes?
It's not that it's too late, because this, the use of cannabis is different than the land use piece of it.
Okay, so basically, basically it is. Okay, because I know there's a policy.
Feedback.
I'm sorry, I was talking.
Wanted to add tobacco, I would need feedback, and by the charter, you couldn't take this back up again until a little bit of cool off.
Okay, then no.
Anyone else?
Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone, anyone else on this one?
I'll make a motion that we plan to bring ordinance prohibiting cannabis on town property to public hearing also on October 20th.
A second?
Second.
Other discussions? Okay, Mary?
Tim?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
All right, thank you, everyone. All right, we'll move on now to item number eight, which is authorizing the resolution supporting the expansion of the Estuary Transit District. Carl, can you give us a brief overview on this one?
Sure, in my reports, I've given you regular updates on the process that is currently being followed to merge the Estuary Transit District with the Middletown Area Transit District. Came out of a study that was done at the CAG level. The DOT wants to see it happen. There are some capacity issues in Middletown where their management wasn't quite as strong and effective as Estuary, which services Quinton. So the intent is to merge the two districts together for a win-win on both sides. The state was supposed to be improving the success rate by providing additional funding that would expand service and lead to a successful merger. So the issue that's been at hand for a while now and has been in multiple reports I've given to council is that firming up the state funding commitment through the DOT has been a concern. A formal agreement, multi-year contract is not going to be entered into, so DOT is providing a letter of commitment, which is not what the boards, the two transit districts wanted to have. But there's still an intent to move forward, still a desire to move forward. So it's just a matter of looking for every town in the Middletown Area Transit District and Estuary to pass similar resolutions that were on board with the merger contingent upon the state fulfilling its, its financial responsibilities.
Thank you.
Carl, two quick questions. You did mention in your report that there's no increase in local matching funds, and also, would we be relinquishing any local control or authority in agreeing to this?
Um, right now, it's not envisioned that there's going to be an increase in the cost to participate in Estuary, so the additional subsidy that the state would provide as well as dues that will be paid by Middletown Area Transit would be neutral to us in terms of loss of control. There would still be a board. The bylaws are being hammered out. The intent that everyone kind of understands is to make sure there isn't a one voice, super majority that can take control of agenda. Estuary has worked well with everybody sort of sharing and providing input, and they want to make sure that that continues going forward with Middletown, so there's a vote-waiting mechanism that's being worked through now that allows for making sure that everybody's going to have to work together when things come up for a vote.
Thank you.
Christine Gupiel, I just want to point out that in the past, we've had a real challenge getting our fair share of contribution for transit projects through the Transit District, so the idea is moving forward. This will help support that fight for our, our dollars for this region of the state.
Anyone else? Okay, here and done, we'll look for a motion then to approve the, whatever, the resolution supporting the expansion of the Estuary Transit District.
I'll make that motion.
Second? Eric, any further discussion? Mary, can you do the call?
Tim?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Mark?
Yeah.
Christine?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. All right, now we'll move on to item number nine, which is the line item transfer. This is coming from our last meeting where we discussed putting forth $12,000 for a study to be done on the Pearson School for Cost Study. So pretty straightforward, so we're just looking for a motion to approve the transfer for the Pearson Study.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, first a second, okay. Is there any other further discussions?
Christine Gupiel. I, I believe I voiced my concerns about the expending of funds. I feel as though it is a preliminary. Having worked on major development projects, both for the town and in previous roles, this just doesn't seem like the appropriate process. I'd like to see us be taking on the other areas that need to be addressed, both the side prey with the property, working that out, working out the zoning to make it more attractive to developers, should that be the intent that the town ultimately decides on as well. Again, I can't support spending $12,000 when a developer, should they choose to develop it, would be making that, that expenditure, especially in light of the other areas that need to be addressed in that building, from the roof to the elevators to access for handy packages as well. I want to know both.
Okay.
Um, I believe, Christine, that we spent a lot, a considerable amount of money on a sharp charrette a couple of years ago that, that gave us no information moving forward on the capabilities of the building. Um, we need to know what the capacity, the useful capacity of the structure is before we can even think about zoning and what we would desire to have ultimately at that location. Without this information of what the building is comprised of and capable of, we are not able to move forward. This is, this is money spent in the correct direction, in my opinion. Thank you.
May I, yeah, I think, I assume this is going to be a structural engineer is going to review this, is probably the architectural review as well. You can't go forward without this. How do you, how do you even consider any uses for this building without really knowing what can it be used for? So I think it's well worth the $12,000 we're talking about.
I agree.
Anybody else? And I think we've had this discussion multiple times amongst the council members as far as working on, you know, everything else that's related to this building, the underlying deed restrictions, dealing with the Morgan Land Trust, and we've already, Carl's been working that, I'm working on that for an extended period of time. So that is something that is in the works, has been in the works, and you know, on the lead from our town manager has told us that, you know, that is something that needs to be resolved before we know where we're going to go with this building regardless. So, you know, those are the things that we have to look at as well as we deal with this project going forward. Carol?
Um, I, at this point, we are as far along as we have ever been, and it feels like we're pulling all the pieces of the puzzle together, and this is a keystone piece of that puzzle. Um, without this information, we are dead in the water. Um, zoning is ancillary, comes after we have determined what the best move is. That can be structured according to what the goal is. Um, we know what zoning is at currently, and we just need to, need to find out what the, what the load capacity, et cetera, is. So um, this, this is the icing on the knowledge cake as far as I'm concerned. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'd like to say something quickly. I think I can speak on behalf of almost all the council members, that we've heard from constituents who want a faster, a quicker, more momentum in developing this, and I don't doubt for a minute that the approach we're taking is appropriate. Is there a way we could inform the community that this approach is the best one and is the way we can move forward? I don't know what this would entail, something in the newspaper, but I know we all received a letter from Lois Kinney, and I think she speaks for quite a few people, that is there a way we can get it out there and tell the folks we are actually doing doing it the right way, so we don't get letters. I've gotten quite a few about, let's get this thing rolling, and, and so people know that this approach is the most appropriate.
I was actually going to make some comments about this in my chairman's comments, because again, this seems to be the hot topic. I know it's election season as well, so you know, things start getting ramped up a little bit. And, and quite honestly, you know, it's, it's also sort of the misinformation that's been presented to the public. Um, there was a recent article in the Harbor News where it said this, this wasn't worked on in years. And I actually, and I actually reached out to Eric and talked to him about that, because that's, couldn't be further from the truth. Carl's been working on this project, this property, for, since he's probably landed in that chair as town manager, because there were things that were left unresolved with him going forward. So, you know, this isn't something that has not been worked on. So yes, the misinformation that gets out to the public sometimes is also, you know, a problem. I think as council members, we should be providing the information to the public that says, yes, you know what? When we have meetings, we are discussing this. We are talking about it, but we're not going to move forward with a project that we can't, you know, bring something to the public with options. The conversations, you know, that, that need to be had is that if we're going to move forward with this project, you know, we need to present them with not only ideas but plans, and the plans would be, you know, budget-related items. If people want a senior center, they want a, you know, a community center, they want these ideas to go into this building, but what are the long-term, you know, effects of that? Because that's budgetary items that we're going to have to budget for going forward, because there's costs associated with running those particular, you know, you know, particular, you know, items. So, you know, those are all things that we have to talk about going forward. I mean, we invite people all the time. I mean, this is, you know, we have these meetings twice a month. People want to know what's going on, invite the people to the meetings, have them come in and listen to what our town manager does on a daily basis. You know, because the misinformation that gets out there is kind of, it gets frustrating at times when you listen to some of the feedback, knowing what we're dealing with, what we're doing, what Carl's doing on a daily basis, and what he has done and continues to do for this town, you know, so, you know, inviting people to come forth and listen to what goes on in our town, and also be involved. And again, we want to get information to them. You know, if we're going to do it one way, this is what the cost is. If we do it another way, there's renovation costs, there's, you know, budgetary costs, you know, going forward. There, there's numerous, you know, things that we would have to look at, and I think we're taking the responsibility as the town council to make sure that we're presenting it to the, to the public in a proper way, and we're doing what we should be doing in order to do it that way. So, um, you know, I guess the good part is there's no chairman's report now, but I just wanted to get that out there because, you know, we need to get the misinformation, you know, taken care of. We need to present the, the public with the information that we are working on this. Carl has been working on it, and it's going to be a project that is important to this town. But we need to make a, you know, a decision based on facts, not on what I would like to see this, you know, because again, the ideas are great, but if we can't implement a plan you know, for those ideas, then, then we're struggling, so.
I just wonder, Chris, if, yeah, if, if Brian Boyd would be willing to run maybe a monthly report from, I know Carl's already works very hard, but maybe an update of Pearson and some other Unilever types of things, because these are the questions we're getting them, and I go, and I always go to Carl, and Carl all gets right back to me, but something perhaps in the paper, or it would be a monthly report, or, you know, I know you and I have spoken about that idea too.
I mean, Carl's gone to the paper, and they, he's been told that there's not room in the paper to do that, so I don't know. You know, I mean, our town reporter's not even on this call, I don't believe, today. So, you know, again, this is kind of where the struggle comes. We would like to get the proper information out, but what is that avenue that we do? You know, so that's, that's open for topic and conversation as well. I mean, like I said, everybody's got great ideas. I'm not, you know, belittling any idea that anybody has, but have all the people that are involved in any of these moving parts been involved in any discussions, you know? There's, there's, you know, they throw out the ideas of, we'll move the library, we'll move this, we'll move that, move this person, move that. None of these people have been invited into a conversation, into a room to say, you know, what is the plan? What is the best way to move forward with this property? And I mean, I think that's what we need to do, but we're not at that yet. Like Carl says, we need to take care of the other things. We need to take care of the underlying deed restrictions. We need to take care of the issues with the land trust. Those are things that need to be taken care of first and foremost. This structural report that we're going to be getting obviously would give us some direction as well, and then we move forward.
Uh, Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Chris.
Yes, Dennis? But you did bring it up, and I, I want to emphasize that point. Yeah, you know, we get a lot of cheap shots about, well, we're not trying to get out to the paper, the town manager's not being out there vocal enough, and I'm glad you mentioned that uh, in your report just a minute ago. We have, the town manager has approached the paper to try to be forthcoming, and they have not cooperated. So, to all those people out there that keep insisting, well, the town manager should be more vocal, he has tried. And for whatever reason, I can't believe that they can't find a spot in that paper for our town manager as well as, uh, the selectmen from Saybrook, Westbrook. It's, it's really puzzling to me that our town manager can't get a little press to give a report. It, it just seems like, you know, mind-boggling, but anyway, I wanted to get that on the public for the people that are tuning in right now, that these little blips on Facebook or letters to the editor or whatever, that the town manager uh, should be more vocal. He has tried, folks. He has really made an effort, but somehow we're, we're getting stonewalled here, period.
But I mean, the issue also becomes the fact of, you know, the, the push was everybody wanted this change in form of government. Well, then let the form of government work. Come and understand the form of government. Come and understand how this operates. We're not the first selecting form of government anymore. That's not how we're run. And quite honestly, I'm pretty happy about that. I'm glad we found a town manager and a professional that can come in and run this town on a daily basis. You know, and then the people that you hear about as council members, we should be supporting that as a council. So as a council, you know, our message to the public is, no, he is doing a good job, and if you want to know what he's doing, why don't you show up to a meeting? We have meetings twice a month, he has a manager's report, he's laying everything out there that he works on on a daily basis, and that's not even half of the stuff that he works on. So, you know, I know this is turning into something other than, you know, the Pearson School, but it, but it all, it all comes together, you know, because again, it's backlash on us, it's backlash on Carl, it's backlash on, you know, on, on things that, you know, we should be working together as a community to move forward with these projects. We shouldn't be working against each other. And, and again, this continues to happen, and it's unfortunate, and, and it gets kind of tiring, and you would hope that at some point, this town manager, you know, that we've brought forth would, would bring us together so that we can work together to get these things, but unfortunately, sometimes it doesn't happen, and, you know, we deal with what we deal with, but, you know, quite honestly, it gets tiring. It gets tiring to hear it, it gets tiring to listen to it. You know, work together as a community, work together as a town to get these things done, and listen, not, like I said from the beginning, not everybody's going to be happy on the decisions that ultimately we will make on Pearson School. And I think everybody in the council, you know, going forward, needs to understand that. It might not be, it might not be the most popular decision that we make, but the decision that we make on Pearson School is going to have a huge impact on our town going forward. And that's the decision we need to make on behalf of the citizens of the town as a whole, not in any particular, you know, political party or any political agendas or anything of the sort. And everybody that makes these decisions or going to be involved in these decisions should come forth and have an honest and open conversation about how we should do this. Um, you know, so that's, I think, the, the push that we need to make, and I think as council members, we need to make sure that we support everything that we're trying to do, and support the town manager, and let them know that, know what, that's not how things are working, and I welcome you to come to a meeting and, and listen to what goes on in this town. I mean, I understand this is a morning meeting, but we got 15 people. We have evening meetings, maybe we got 18 people. But you hear a lot of talking, but you don't hear a lot of people showing up. So. Anyone else with any comments? So, um, at this point then, we'll take a, we'll look for the motion. So at this point, then we'll take a we'll look for the motion to approve the item transfer to 12,000.
So moved.
A second?
A second.
Any further discussion? Mary?
Tim?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Christine?
No.
Dennis?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Now we'll move on to the council discussion on future projects. You might have already beat that one up already, but is there anything further that anybody would like to to discuss? I think, Carl, you want to just talk to about the ARPA, I guess some extensions on the ARPA funding so that at least everybody's aware of that?
Yeah, so Treasury Department extended the reporting period for ARPA dollars. Originally, we were looking at the first report having to be suspended by October 31st. So that has now been kicked out for non entitlement units, which is us to April 30th, 2022. Before we have to do anything with with Treasury. So that's a positive. It's equally helpful because we're still operating without final rules around the program. We're just operating under the so-called interim final rules. As FAQ's that were put out by Treasury, which provide insight and guidance to the program are dated July 19th, 2021. So clearly, there needs to be a little bit more time associated with what Treasury's got to do on its part of administering the program. And that's reflected in kicking it the reporting period out till April of next year.
All right, thank you. Anyone else have any comments on future projects that they'd like to discuss? All good? All right, next time, the chairman's report. I have nothing further to report at this time, so we will move to the town manager's report.
So you have my written report, a couple of things to call your attention to. So for your awareness, last night was an early kickoff meeting for the regional housing study, which is being done through the COG. The intent is for, at a regional level, that there'll be a regional housing plan, which is an analysis of what's going on in the county, what's in our in our region. What are the drivers? What's the market demand and the like for housing? And then buried in that, for each of the 12 municipalities that are part of the study, is a formal housing plan to comply with state statute 830 dash or 8-30J, which requires every five years a formal housing plan. The actual meeting to the public will be next week, 12th at seven o'clock. We've put that out on our social media and the town's website. The library is also putting it out to make sure the public is aware. The preview last night dealt with looking at some of the statistics. What are the drivers and what does the market look like for the region? It's a little tough to sit through and not not really super upbeat, but it helps inform what ultimate housing policy will be. The I think the more meaty piece is getting into what are the towns going to do and what that town dialogue is going to start to look like. That's pushed out till the winter months, so it would really be sort of a post holidays effort in the beginning months of 2022. Where there will be more of a local discussion, getting more local feedback in terms of what the issues are in each town. But for those that are interested, there will be a meeting, our online virtual meeting next week, 12th at seven o'clock that offered to the COG. The consultants will be presenting some of the data that they've collected and what that means for the marketplace in in our part of the state. Also called to your attention, a new CCM committee that was created in response to some of the recent crime activities that involve youth. So they have put together a task force focused on violence prevention, recidivism and community relations. The idea is to sort of de-politicize the discussion and come up with some options that may make sense when the general assembly reconvenes. For how to address some of the issues that are cropping up now in 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 cities and suburbs. Under the COG updates, the sort of the most important thing there was an update that came through Department of Emergency Management. FEMA is playing the role of matchmaker to help regions and municipalities connect projects that are important for their COVID recovery with potential funding sources. So there, Demus has been happy to have FEMA do that role. The projects obviously need to be FEMA related. FEMA is just sort of being that intermediary, trying to make funding connections for projects to move forward. Some of the projects that were forward for Clinton weren't necessarily regional in nature. They are regional in terms of it's an issue across our area, but obviously trying to find additional funding for sewers is important. Trying to find funding to cap the waste of the former landfill is important. Then sort of flooding hazard mitigation issues is becoming an issue on an ongoing basis. There was not a MIRA update normally. An opportunity for discussion to talk about MIRA because we have two members of the COG are on the MIRA board. However, MIRA sent out an email, trying to schedule an informational meeting. They want to go over what their future looks like for them as an organization and it's an entity that handles solid waste. They are not recommending a particular course of action. They're sort of going to lay out what they've done, lay out their RFPs, what things look like. They're expecting feedback from municipalities. They have to make make themselves their their own lines in terms of what direction they're going to go. Not to rehash history, but some sort of a similar practice that they went through when CR already had problems and with their NROD investments, trying to get feedback for what their next direction is going to be. So once that meeting takes place, I'll be in a better position to let the council know what MIRA's thoughts are. I'm not really anticipating that they're going to telegraph what tip fees are going to be going next year. At this point, if they're not going to recommend a course of action, so that's, that'll probably still be in process. But at least we'll we'll get an idea of where they're trying to head as an organization and how they want to handle handle solid waste in the state of Connecticut. At a minimum, we'll be shipping it out of the state, but we'll we'll know more going forward. On budget development, as followed to our budget workshop, we had an idea, had a conversation about next steps, information, how she should be influencing her process, the type of dialogue that we should be having. Sort of wrap up the information that the council gave us and dovetail that into where it ends budget process and work it into the town's budget process. We've got something to present to you in February. We can make reference to the broad targets and what that we got out of the council earlier. We'll be working with our financial advisor on the issuance of additional debt. This will be two forms of bond anticipation notes, which we've kind of historically done as part of financing needed in order to get capital projects moving. And then when a bond anticipation note has has reached a two-year milestone, it needs to be converted into a proper long-term bond. So we have some bands that need to be converted. That'll take place in February, but the planning and preparation for what that's going to look like and sizing the bands will take place. But we'll start later this month and then we'll work through the fall prepping for dealing with the bond rated agencies and prepping for going to the marketplace again. So that'll be continuing and ongoing work. That'll be a topic of conversation. On the solid waste front, because I don't really have any feedback from sustainability. DEEP does, did put out an announcement last week about potential technical assistance. They're looking for towns to express interest in whether the community is interested in a unit base pricing, which is also known as pay as you throw and or food scrap diversion. I don't think we've discussed any of these in any degree of depth of council meeting. I know Eric has asked me questions about it, but I don't think either one of these topics have been on the council debate or. If we're going to do a food scrap program where food scraps are taken out of the waste stream and are recycled, it does make financial sense to have that waste stream trucked out of town, at least right now, based on the vendor infrastructure. It looks as if cost to ship food scraps out of town, that increases our cost for solid waste. So we'd be more looking at trying to secure permit through DEEP and working into the compost files at the transfer station. We know what other municipality in the area that is composting it in that fashion. Don't think we need technical advice from DEEP on that end. We can we can handle that on your own if there's there's some direction from the council that that's that's what you want to do. Pay as you throw, I think is both complicated in town. And if that was where the council wanted to go, that's certainly something that would require technical advice because we have a hybrid system where you've got individuals that bring their waste from their home to transfer station. And then you've got other people that are majority folks are with private hauler. So it's not a clean singular program. It's it's sort of two legs in terms of how solid waste can be dealt with. I'm not sure where the council wants to go with it because I haven't really heard any conversation to this end. Eric, I don't know if you want to give the council the benefit of your feedback on this as a topic.
No, what what direction would you need from us as a council as a whole to move forward, at least with the discussion of unit based pricing? And then the composting idea, would we need sustainability to come to the table and and give us some of their their work?
I think at this point, you're beyond sustainability. They they have not provided reports to the council and I don't know where they are on this particular topic. So this would be going to DEEP, trying to get them to support us with technical assistance in order to fund a study that would look at changing solid waste from you throw it in your bin and you drag it up to the curb and the hauler takes it away and you pay them monthly, quarterly, whatever your individual deal is. Two, you're paying based on volume. The intent of pay by pay as you throw is supposed to reduce the solid waste piece and increase the recycling piece. And that that's an approach to trying to manage your solid waste flow. So at this point, it would be the council is okay with me filling out the appropriate paperwork to at least try and leverage their technical resources to look at it. It's non-binding. I know a number of towns have utilized this program, had a study done, and then they don't do anything because it's coming back as unworkable, unfavorable. Doesn't have community support, but there's any number of reasons why they didn't go anywhere.
Well, I'll make a motion if you could pursue that on our behalf.
Anyone else?
Christine Gopiel, I think we probably need a lot more community input. And the only way to do that is really is that we have to inform the public about those options. It's kind of complex and it needs to be boiled down, I think, so that everybody understands it fully. When you're talking about waste recycling, that's the type of recycling being picked up on a household basis, we really need to know the numbers of people interested in utilizing it. When you're in a city environment, it does make a lot more sense. You don't have backyards for composting the waste that does break down. The other food waste that is not acceptable for that type of composting or that would not break down and would attract vermin is not feasible in that environment. But in a more suburban environment like ours, there are options out there that are being sold to to compost that type of waste. So I think moving forward, it would make a lot more sense if we put these the information out to the public and let them provide feedback back to us, the types of uses people are interested in.
Yeah, Christine's right on that on that point. Just that pay as you throw is got some challenges from a PR standpoint and public perception in terms of a business model. It maybe works well in a city environment or where public works is doing the door-to-door waste collection because it's a little easier to draw a connection between pay as you throw, reducing costs and reducing taxes. Our model is, it's kind of a mess and it's difficult to articulate what the win is to the public other than sort of a general environmental thrust. This seems to be where DEEP is going in lieu of any other solid waste policy. It's to encourage recycling and we're going to recycle our way out of out of the current predicament of MIRA. There's an awful lot of moving pieces. There really needs to be some education and baseline knowledge to know whether it's a concept people want to buy into before we start looking at the business model. Really, you know, it's unfortunate that the appointed committees haven't kind of picked us up to give any feedback to the council. But if you want to pursue it, you really need a mechanism where you've got some people that are prepared to spend time looking at it, understanding it and trying to educate the public in terms of whether it's good, bad or indifferent, or how it would work at Clinton. And then then we move forward with trying to engage some sort of technical assistance.
Okay, clarification. Carl, you were talking about a central location for composting at the town. I won't call it dump, but recycle.
Transfer station.
Transfer station.
Yeah, so it would be.
I've never been there.
Two programs. There's nothing that precludes an individual from if they compost at present to composting an element of food scraps. That's that's nothing that precludes them from doing that at your home. I think when you're looking at it on the municipal side, the examples is your transfer station is picking it up as either a waste stream and then trucking it to a mass composter, which I believe the only one in the states in Hartford. Or they're mixing it in with leaves that are collected to to be turned into compost. There's a permitting process that we have to go through with DEEP to address that, whether it's your backyard or whether it's a transfer station, the issue of controlling vermin will will always be at play. But if you want to look at diversion of waste and trying to reduce what we pay for MSW, it is, it will chip away a little bit. The volumes that we've seen in other municipalities aren't huge. And if you wanted to go down the route of trucking it out of town, it it that increases our cost, which doesn't doesn't seem to be where we're at as community right now, paying more for something if we don't have to.
Anyone else? So I guess at this point, we're going to get called to the direction then to to get some further information on this. I mean, are we all comfortable with that?
I am.
Definitely. I either I send send something back to DEEP by October 29th, or we look at a localized effort. Maybe the council issues a directive to sustainability to to look at it. Their charge did include looking at recycling and MSW, but they have not really given any updates as required by their charge.
I mean, seeing as sustainability really hasn't come forth with anything, I think, I mean, as a council, we probably should take it over and move forward with it. And if they were given the charge already and they still haven't brought anything forth, I mean, I don't know if we give them another opportunity to do something or, I mean.
You could you could make it clear what the council wants and expects out of them so that they they have a clear directive and then hopefully they respond to it. It may fall out of alignment with this October 29 deadline to to light up, try and get some technical support. I I really think you got to kind of, the council as a group at a minimum needs to understand what this means. before we're, we're heading headlong into this.
Right. Well, and given the lack of information we've been provided by sustainability, I think we should just move forward and that probably will. Yes, no, maybe?
Fine by me.
So how would the, how would the, uh, council handle it? What would you want to see from the council, Carl? Oh, I'm sorry. I mean, do we need to form a committee and get to work on it? Is that what you're saying?
And, and I think the question is whether you want to leverage this, uh, technical assistance from DEEP right now or whether you want to go through a deliberative process locally. If you want to leverage the DEEP process, uh, I can give you additional information and line it up for your meeting on the 20th and add that to our agenda. So that you're aware and understand what we would be going into. Or you charge one of your pre-existing committees that has this as a responsibility to look at it and provide some feedback to the council and I don't know whether they can turn it around for the 29th or not.
Eric?
Anything's possible.
Anybody have any comments? So what's the direction we want to go?
Eric's talking, but he's muted.
I don't know.
Is that the class or is that him?
I think it's class.
Eric is talking to somebody else.
Personally, I'd like to see the sustainability committee be re, uh, outreach to or reached out to and see if they feel up to the job. And if they don't, I mean, give that, you know, like take a week and see if they can do anything. And if they can't, then we, the, the council would move forward on that. I mean, that's my opinion.
The problem is that Carl has to reach out by October 29th. I don't know if sustainability.
Today, today's the 7th.
Today's the 6th. I don't know.
Six, so sustainability would have to really focus and crank out something to the council for your next meeting. Uh, then go forward, otherwise we could go forward, start the conversation, do the study and then if it comes to not, it comes to not.
Um, as a, Christine Gopiel, as a suggestion, um, perhaps you can reach out to sustainability. Ask them if they can call a special meeting to address it and if they can get it done. If they cannot, then it will just defer to the council.
That sounds good.
All right, there we go.
Let's do that.
Any other questions or comments to call? All right, and then we will move on to the town council committee liaison reports. Anybody have anything to report at this time? Mark?
Yeah, I was part of a, um, meeting last evening with the Connecticut Water Company. Um, they reiterated that they had, uh, PURA had approved, not to the extent that they wanted is increases, but they had approved a 5% increase, which I think Carl knows about and, and put into his budget for the fire use, the fire hydrants. And that's approximately what's going to hit with consumers as well. Moreover, they have a proposal in front of the PURA and a decision will become out in November for an additional 2% to 3%. Not so much for towns, but for, uh, individuals. Like, so I don't think from a town, from a town government perspective, we'll have to worry about other than the 5%. Uh, infrastructure, of course, they talked about that. Um, their, uh, their surcharge is zero on the bills now, but yeah, it will come back in January. They're planning about a $62 million infrastructure across the state, not in Clinton alone. They did, uh, stress they have this water assistance program, which, uh, people that are income eligible customers are having difficulty. There is a 15% reduction in their bill. And if they're unable to pay, there's a 24-month, uh, interest-free program for them to pay. And they also talked about their, uh, better, doing a better outreach with our emergency planning. Because with, uh, Ida hit, that additional rain put substantial pressure on the dam. And that there was a concern, not just of the dam in Clinton, but several dams in the state. And that they need to do a better job of interacting because, you know, there's always potential that you have to evacuate downstream. So those are the things that they're working on.
Thank you, Mark. Anybody else?
I'll, I'll report on planning and zoning. They, they meet later this month and, uh, inland wetlands met last night briefly and I'll give my report at our next meeting.
Eric? Anyone else? Nope, all right. Then we'll now move on to executive session, uh, personnel pursuant to Connecticut General Statutes 1-206A and invite Carl and Mary.
So moved.
Got a motion?
Yep. So moved.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, thank you. All right, so we're out of executive session. We'll move on to item number 15, which is a public works truck driver. Everybody go on.
Everybody go on to you.
At this point, we have a motion to, uh, approve the hiring of a public works truck driver. Tim? A second?
Second.
Dennis, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Abstained?
Abstained.
Thank you. Love this feedback. All right, everybody on back on. Move on to number 16, which is a police department executive assistant. Do we have a motion to approve the hiring of a police department executive assistant? Tim? A second? Carol? Further discussion? All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Abstained, thank you. And lastly, uh, number 17, which is the senior program coordinator. Do we have a motion to move forward with the hiring of the senior program coordinator? Tim?
Both.
Second, Dennis, further discussion? All in favor?
Favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Excellent.
Excellent.
Can't wait to get out this meeting.
This meeting.
Good.
Good.
So moved. The second?
The second.